Mashpee Board of Selectmen's meeting Monday, August 9, 2021, at the Wacoite Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall. We have streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, www.mashpeemass.gov/Channel18. It is 6:30, and we're convening in open session, and we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
(Clerk) Pledge of Allegiance. (Clerk) Lord of the States, Reverend, and through the Republic of America, we stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'd like a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Approval of the following Monday, July 26, 2021, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Okay, public comment.
Good evening. Mary Wagen of Schumett Road. And I'm always first, that's because I think I just get here earlier than everybody else. But anyways, I'll start it off again. So, in spring of 2021, the Mashpee Water District voted to expend $8.4 million to install a filtration system to remove PFAS contaminants from our drinking water wells. And this PFAS plume is an emerging contaminant coming off of the Joint Base Cape Cod. So when I saw the matter that the Joint Base Cape Cod Commander's briefing was tonight, I just thought I'd take the opportunity to ask if there are any plans from either Joint Base Cape Cod or another entity to remove and remediate that PFAS plume that's coming and contaminating our drinking water. Anybody that's taken any basic environmental science knows that the best thing to do is to clean up at the source. You know, we are installing a filter at our drinking water wells, but the best thing to do is to clean up at the source and get rid of it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Good evening. My name is Mike Rapaz. I live at 123 Quiniquis at F. And I'm representing the Mashpee Wakebeak, the Town's Mashpee Wakebeak Lake Committee this evening. And I'd like to read a short letter that was sent to the Select Board, the Sewer Commission, and the-
Can you use the microphone, please?
I'd like to read a letter into the record that is from the Mashpee Wakebeak Lake Committee. The Mashpee Wakebeak Lake Committee would like to urge our town officials to accelerate our town's searing program to be a 10- to 12-year program instead of a 25-year program. Many of us who were present at the July 26 Select Board meeting heard Dr. Howes present a very bleak picture of estuarine water quality for Wacoite and pampan acid. Repeated breakouts of cyanobacteria in our freshwater ponds indicate a bleak future for our ponds as well. Dr. Howes also indicated that the best way to address water quality problems now would be to speed up searing. Our committee agrees with this opinion and asks that you take the necessary steps to compress the searing schedule by at least half and prioritize the portions of the watersheds that contribute groundwater to our ponds. It is clear from the slides that Dr. Howes has showed us over the past few years that the upper reaches of our water bodies have the most degraded water quality. For example, the upper portion of the Mashpee River is suffering due to nitrogen flowing through and out of Mashpee Wakebeak. It has become clear that in order to improve water quality in the estuaries, we must also improve water quality in our freshwater bodies. We therefore request that you revisit the current comprehensive nitrogen management plan, make it a comprehensive wastewater management plan that includes prioritization of our ponds and lakes, and that can be completed in a dozen years. We thank you for your consideration and your community service. Thank you.
Good evening, Arden Russell. Thank you again for allowing public comment. Tonight, I'm here to share information with this board and with the public about information I've received from the Cape Cod Commission regarding the Mashpee Commons Development Agreement process. As a reminder, Chapter D of the Cape Cod Commission regulations require that a development agreement application shall include a fully completed development agreement application and its required attachments. Within 10 business days of certification by Commission staff that a completed application has been filed, the Chair will appoint a subcommittee to represent the Commission in negotiating a development agreement. As it's now been five months since the March 5 deadline for the Mashpee Commons to submit a complete development agreement application, I contacted the Cape Cod Commission's Chief Regulatory Officer to determine when the Commission would expect to certify the application as complete so that the review process can begin. The response I received from the Chief Regulatory Officer was, and I quote, "The applicant has until June of 2022 to submit a completed application. As such, there is no minimum information required at this time. No complete development application is now due until June of 2022. No Cape Cod Commission Subcommittee can meet, no development application to negotiate." Why then is the Select Board considering acting on a zoning change in March in response to an application that will not yet be available until June? This process cannot begin until the application is complete. Why didn't the Cape Cod Commission's Director, on June 21, when she was sitting here in this room, meeting with you, mention this new deadline during the joint meeting with the Town? This information seems very important to the review process. Does Mashpee Commons really intend to proceed with a development agreement process, or are they actually just looking for a zoning change? I just want to confirm with this board that all review of the Mashpee Commons expansion proposal must halt until there is a certified, complete development agreement application. Thank you.
Normally, we do not respond to public comment, but I'm going to repeat what I said to this audience and to the board two months ago. We will not go forward with any zoning changes until we have a development agreement. End of story.
Lynn Barbie, Surf Drive. I want to thank you, Madam Chair and the Select Board, for having made that decision because it seems that the development plan of Mashpee Commons is as real as this unicorn is real. And I never expected that to be the case when I did my cart before the horse. But there is, the thing that is disturbing me is that it seems like that there are folks on the planning board, particularly the Chair, who intended to continue to go ahead with the zoning process. So I'm hoping that that will now cease. It seems like it has. But I want to thank you all again for making sure that we stayed in touch with reality when it comes to this Mashpee Commons project. Thank you.
Discussion and approval of the following special events application. Unfortunately, the National Night Out, which was scheduled for Tuesday, August 17, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Frank Hicks Drive, will not take place. It's been canceled. The next one is Annual Screech at the Beach, which is Saturday, October 23, 2021, 10:30 a.m. to 12:30, Shore Drive to South Cape Beach. Boys and Girls Club of Cape Cod, Boils and Girls Club of Cape Cod, President is Jim Kiley. I've told them that they didn't need to come in tonight, that we would look at the application and approve. Okay?
Motion approved.
Second.
Screech to the Beach.
Roll call, Tom?
Yes.
David, yes.
Carol, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
John, yes.
Discussion and approval of the appointment of the following Special Events Committee Member-at-Large. Term will expire June 30, 2022. Christian Kelleher. Is Christian here? I told her she didn't have to come.
Make a motion. We appoint Ms. Kelleher to a spot on the committee expiring June 30, 2022.
Second.
Roll call, Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
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 And yes. Okay. Mashpee Wakebeak Lake Management Committee Member-at-Large. Terms expires June 30, 2022. Paul Rubio?
Make a motion. We appoint Mr. Bevo to the Mashpee Wakebeak Lake Management Committee with the term expired June 30, 2022.
Roll call?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
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 Okay, good. Discussion and approval of dispatch agreement with the Barnsville Sheriff's Department. Fire Chief, Tom Marula? Tom, I thought I saw him.
Just per overview, it's an increase of approximately $2,000 or less than 2%.
Hi, Tom. Anybody have any questions? No?
Do you have any issues with dispatch services provided by the county, Tom?
No, no. We're quite happy with the dispatch service.
Okay.
Yeah. I make a motion. We approve the agreement with the county for dispatch services from July 1, 2021, to June 3, 2022.
Second.
Roll call? Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Tom.
Seems like you need that communication, the way I hear those sirens going around, Tom. Seems like they're running constantly.
Very busy.
We're pretty busy, pretty busy summer. Very, thank you, Tom.
Discussion and certification of a betterment assessment for Emmy Oakley, Mills Way.
So this is the last step, right?
I-
They've been built, they've been notified. I'll make a motion that we assess the betterments as provided for each property owner in Schedule A of the attached document.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, John?
Yes.
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 Very good. Okay. 6:40, public hearing continued from July 26, 2021. Comcast Cable Television License Renewal Proposal. Do we have anybody here from Comcast?
We did finally receive a message today at 12:40.
Today?
Today. That the gentleman that we've been corresponding with, who was going to zoom in at the last meeting, had a conflict tonight and would not be zooming in or attending tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting. So, on the advice of Town Council, the recommendation is to reject.
And then what happens?
Vote not to accept the renewal proposal as submitted, and then essentially it gets turned over to the working group for a continuation with Town Council, and then I will report back to the board.
Yeah.
Do I have anybody here speaking Comcast? Do I have a motion to-
Yes, that's-
I make a motion.
John is on our working group.
Yes, John Miller is on the working group for Comcast.
John Miller, Shell Park Way. I was just going to acknowledge that. I think the Town Manager's recommendation to you is right on target. Whether Comcast is represented during this public hearing or not, the hearing is probably premature because we don't really have a counterproposal to submit to either the Board of Selectmen yet or to present to Comcast. So the rejection tonight will give us an opportunity to get an extension from the state for the four-month to seven-month window that we need to work out a new deal.
Very good.
So I would encourage the rejection. Thank you.
Do I have a-
Just for clarity, so that there's no break in service or nothing that would affect the Town?
No.
No, sir.
Chris?
This is a procedural step more than anything.
Some days, how would you notice?
Make a motion, a second.
No, we have somebody speaking. We have to close the public hearing after.
Chris Boyle, 83, Quiniquis Road, Mashpee TV. We saw the proposal for the first time today. We're very concerned about several aspects in there, that the Town's not being served as they should be and as they even have been in the past, particularly as it pertains to our government buildings and to Mashpee TV. We urge the Board at this time to decline the offer.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Make a motion. We vote not to accept the proposal as submitted.
Do I have a-
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Now we have Joint Base Cape Cod Commander's briefing.
Madam Chair, Selectmen, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to give you an update on what's going on at Joint Base Cape Cod. Just one note, Captain Potter, the new Air Station Cape Cod commanding officer, had a personal, last-minute personal issue. He's on his way, but we're not sure he's going to make it. If he doesn't make it, then Captain Sean Hannigan will cover in his stead. I'm Paul Rendell. I'm the Joint Base Cape Cod Executive Officer, work for Brigadier General Lefoe. And the first up is going to be Colonel Riley from the 102nd.
Good evening. So Sean Riley, Commander, the 102nd. Start off by thanking Mr. Collins and the entire Select Board for having us this evening. I was going to start off with a quick overview, reminder if you will, about the 102nd Intelligence Wing Massachusetts Air National Guard, what we've been doing out there, certainly pretty busy over the last 18 months. And then my second slide will kind of update you on some of the procedures, programs, processes that certainly impact the surrounding communities. So I've got a wing of just over 1,200 airmen, essentially divided into five different groups. I have three operational groups, two ISR or intelligence, surveillance, and reconnaissance groups, and then a cyber engineering and installation group. So my ISR group's the 102 ISR group. They perform a mission seven days a week, 365 days a year, processing intelligence right here from Cape Cod to support combatant commanders across the globe. The 202 ISR group, similar reach-back mission, but they really focus on getting information out of cyberspace to hold our adversaries at risk and provide decision advantage, again, for combatant commanders and personnel all over the world. And then the cyber engineering installation group, that's like our very own geek squad. They can go anywhere at any time and set up communications from a bear base overseas. They've actually worked down the White House office complex. And then the two groups in the middle, I've got a medical group broken down into two units, the general support, they kind of keep us fit to fight and make sure that we can deploy anywhere, anytime. And then we have a unique kind of to our unit, we have a medical detachment that supports FEMA for emergency homeland response, from anything from the Boston Marathon to a dirty bomb. And then finally, our support group, are many of the same functions you'd find within the Town, engineers, communications, personnel, and security that keep the 102nd portion of Joint Base Cape Cod up and running. So I'll pause for any questions. Next slide, Paul, please. Thank you. So over the past three years, since about 2018, we put about $30 million into the facilities out there, the Air National Guard, or the 102nd, and we've got about another $15 million that we're planning as we go forward, FY22, starting in October. We're really trying to step down from a large flying mission. We had fighter aircraft to a small footprint, a walking campus, dropping from about 3,600 acres to about 650 acres to support those kind of high-tech intel and cyber missions. We're looking to divest land either back to the federal government or the Commonwealth, focusing now on Connery Ave., which comes up the Otis Rotary, and through the center of Joint Base Cape Cod, and then also looking at giving up the airfield, at least from the air guard perspective, as we no longer have a flying mission. And we have a large hangar out there that has some interest potentially for other uses that we've been talking to different folks across the Commonwealth potentially to use that, as we no longer need that facility. Finally, we're looking to kind of get out of the utilities business. The Air National Guard and Air Force before it has been the host, if you will, and the utility provider for all of Joint Base Cape Cod. So we're working first and foremost to divest the water and wastewater. We've got an exchange proposal with Converge and their partners, and as of the end of last week, that had gone through state leadership, up through the Air National Guard Bureau, was over at Air Force, and then the final step will require Secretary of Air Force, and that would turn over those utilities to a public-private arrangement. We've also started initial conversations on the electric grid out there, how we could get that upgraded and turned over to a proper utility provider. And then we've come up with a microgrid that would allow the air guard to have electrical independence via generator and ultimately wind power, that we could go in an emergency, essentially off the grid. And in addition to our intelligence and cyber missions, we've been pretty busy with domestic operations. Our medical folks have done over 12,000 days initially supporting a lot of long-term care facilities. Many of those were located right here on the Cape, and then they switched to be more of vaccination sites. And our security forces were very busy supporting specifically Boston PD with security several times, and we had many wing members down in the national capital region during and immediately after the inauguration. All of those folks have since returned home. So that's my update for this evening, pending any questions you might have.
John? Andrew?
Good. I was going to say, do you want them now, or do you want them at the end?
Do you have air guard specific questions, sir?
Hard to tell.
Chief?
I'm sorry, John.
All right. So you mentioned Converge and the wastewater?
Correct.
So I'll chime in on that. Just curious, so it sounds like that's moving forward and everything like that. Is Converge going to be the key player in negotiating with the different towns with potential usage of the, and the potential build of the treatment center?
So, yes, I don't want to speak for Converge, but I believe it is their intent, and I'm pretty sure that they have reached out to the four surrounding communities, at least initially. So they would take over the existing wastewater plant that provides specifically, you know, utilities for Joint Base Cape Cod, and then, you know, you'd really need to ask them where they go from there. But to my understanding, they have reached out to the four surrounding communities in the last 30 to 60 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Where is the, you talk about since 2018, so three years now, that you've spent $30 million, and you've got $15 million in facility-related, and then you talk about significant reduction in your footprint. Is there some document that describes that overall mission change and how it affects the facility itself that people could reference?
I guess a lot of that was driven by, you know, going from a flying mission where you, you know, repaired and worked on aircraft that had fueling capabilities and such, and coming down to a mission where you're dealing with people in climate-controlled facilities. I don't think we have an actual document that drove that or codifies that. It was just based on, you know, after the BRAC and the divestiture of the flying mission there at the 102nd.
Yes, the reason of my question, and this will be thematically repeated numerous times over the course of the evening, is you used to have a master plan for the base of the facility that came out of the changes in the legislation that occurred in the early 2000s, that talked about activities on the base and facilities, and how certain things are going to be done in cooperation with the communities and resource protection, where you've got a major change in focus, where you became a non-flying wing, in effect. How did that, was that ever reflected in any document that says, "We used to be going down this road, now we're going down this road, and we either need certain facilities and activities and capabilities at this location, and/or we can retire certain ones"? You've, I mean, you got $30 million, maybe 15 more in planning.
Sure.
You articulated that to somebody to get that money. So what was the, what was the business case that was made, and how is that process through the public process to reflect changes in the master plan?
Well, I think if we go back, I mean, the decision was made in the 2005 BRAC, which re-missioned, right, or took the fighters and moved them, and then as the 102nd was identified for follow-on missions, initially command and control and intelligence, and now intelligence and cyber, yes, the 102nd proper has a master plan that was developed with state, military, and Air National Guard leadership that has guided our path as we reduce our footprint and our plant replacement and change our facilities to meet our new missions.
So largely, largely an internal to the military, guard, and Commonwealth discussion about what you wouldn't, wouldn't be continuing to do, as opposed to, and was the, was the master plan ever updated to reflect that mission change?
Not the old master plan. So each agency will develop their own facilities plan or master plan, and those are coordinated with their higher headquarters, et cetera. And I think those are all public information.
So if I hear you right, then the original master plan that was done in the early 2000s that was guiding it hasn't been updated and does not currently reflect mission priorities and objectives?
Yep.
So, Mr. Gottlieb, what you're referring to is the Community Working Group Master Plan, I believe, correct?
Yep.
So there's difference, the term working plan isn't, you know, when he's talking about a master plan, he's really talking about the master plan for, you know, each service. So each service on the base has their own master plan on how they'll develop the property. Now, what you're talking about is a Community Working Group Master Plan back in the early or late 90s, early 2000s, that created the guiding principles, which then went into the, you know, into the certificate by the Energy and Environmental Affairs, and then eventually went to the, turned in or translated into the Chapter 47 Acts of 2002. So that was kind of the process, but that's different. So that wasn't really meant to be updated. That was create the guiding principles on how this is the theme of what we think the property should be used for. That got taken into the state agencies and then turned into legislation. What he's referring to is the master plan for his service, and we have one too, just like the Coast Guard does.
Thank you for the clarity.
David?
Nothing at this time.
Tom? You okay?
All right. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. Lieutenant Colonel Skip Sheehan, native New Englander, and this is actually my second assignment with the Sixth Base Warning Squadron. I was here as a captain from 2009 to 2012. So being a native and to be able to come back here with my family, it's just awesome to be back on the Cape. Did an assignment down at Patrick and Cape Canaveral, and there's no question in our mind, when people say the Cape, which one they're talking about. So now I get to come back and be the commander, and hopefully everybody is aware that as of June 11, we became Cape Cod Space Force Station. So with the stand-up of Space Force, Air Force Space Command was elevated from a major command within the United States Air Force to a- Force to a separate service within the Department of the Air Force, in the same way that you have the Navy and the Marine Corps within the Department of the Navy, but still separate services. So on March 4th, 2020, I signed my, tendered my resignation to the United States Air Force, contingent upon acceptance into the Space Force, and then on November 3rd, I went through another commissioning ceremony, became a member of the United States Space Force. So despite all those changes, what hasn't changed is our mission and what we do with the radar at now Cape Cod Space Force Station. Primary mission being missile warning. We're putting energy out across the ocean, looking for any incoming ICBMs or SLBMs. In a nutshell, we're providing deterrent capability, because I don't know if you remember the last time we got hit by an ICBM, but since it hasn't happened, you're welcome. While we're doing that, a lot of that is happening automatically. What a lot of my operators spend their time doing is configuring the radar to do space surveillance, contributing to the Space Domain Awareness Mission of the United States Space Command. For that, we've got about 5,000 active satellites in orbit going around the Earth, all kinds of different orbits, close to far away. And those 5,000 active satellites, there's about 34,000 other trackable objects that we can track, whether it's pieces of debris from other satellites, rocket bodies, and that doesn't account for these small pieces that we're unable to really track and keep, to know exactly where they are. So we're trying to keep everything safe in orbit. We want to make sure our assets are protected. We also want to make sure that we know where our adversaries are and what they're doing with their assets, because you get something up in space, and sometimes you have the ability to move it, and if it moves somewhere, why did it move someplace? Let's find it and make sure we know what's happening with it. So day-to-day, that's what a lot of my operators are doing while they're sitting up on console, not to mention the defenders that are protecting the installation, and then everybody that's operating, maintaining, and protecting everything that happens on Cape Cod Space Force Station. Go get the next slide, please. So with that, I have a very small team. It's about 130 people, so we're very much reliant on our partners on Joint Base Cape Cod, as well as the community, especially from a law enforcement and fire resources. So if anything were to happen, I know we're picking up the phone, making the call, and getting a lot of support, which was evident by all the folks that came out for our name change ceremony. We had mass state police out there and all kinds of partners from the community, which was awesome. We also, my parent organization back at Buckley Space Force Base in Colorado, actually just ran an article today about our wind turbines. Those went up in 2014, and we actually have generated enough power that we, in soiling back to the system as credits, that we paid for the installation of those project, of those turbines, four years ahead of schedule. And being a giant radar, putting out a lot of energy, we use about $5,000 a day in electricity, and those two wind turbines, which we operate, generate about 80% annually of our electrical usage that goes back into the grid. So it's really amazing how much we're able to do with just those two. So that's a lot of-
Do you have solar too, or is it just wind power?
Just wind.
Just wind.
So that's a lot of what we've got going on at Cape Cod Space Force Station, and happy to take any questions.
Tom? David?
Just a comment. I was actually at the name change, and I found the, I did take a tour, and I was amazed. It was very interesting, and I appreciate all you do. So, well done.
Andrew?
Nothing.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much. We're gonna bring the two Coast Guard, the two Coasties up front, and we'll do our presentation together. I am Captain Rod Potter, just reported in. I was able to escape the clutches of Washington, DC, in the staff tour, and I'm very excited to be up here with you tonight. So I am the commanding officer of Air Station Cape Cod. For our air station, we've got, you've probably seen our aircraft flying around, we have three H-60s, and we also have additionally two, I'm sorry, three 144s. That's our maritime patrol aircraft that does a lot of the searching and patrols that we have. So all together, at the air station, we have 176 active-duty personnel and civilians. We are, if you look in the map, we are the only Coast Guard aviation resource between New Jersey and the Canadian border. So basically, we have, we cover all of New England. And then also, we also cover some of the Great Lakes also, so we will extend our legs a little bit to the west. So now, in addition to our six aircraft that we have, we also have a large contingent from the Coast Guard Auxiliary. Now, the Coast Guard Auxiliary, if you've not heard of them, they are basically a contingent of the Coast Guard, and they're all volunteers. So of that volunteer force, we've got roughly about 40 aircraft and 200 members that will volunteer their time and their aircraft to do patrols and maintenance missions and different sorties that we would need. So those type of aircraft range anything from like a twin-engine fixed-wing aircraft to like a Cessna 172 that you might see flying So we're a pretty busy air station. If you look at it, over the year, we do about roughly 200 search and rescue cases annually. Now, that will ebb and flow with the summertime. If I look back on the month of July, we had a case roughly every day, on average, and we saved or assisted one life every other day. So we had a very busy month. Looking kind of past, last three years, over roughly 200 folks saved. We are gearing up now and are prepping for hurricane response, so anytime anything, any storm will move its way into the Gulf or along the East Coast, even something, even if a, even if something will hit on the West Coast, we'll deploy aircraft and crews there additionally. Now, the counter-drug deployments, our 144s will deploy down south. We'll work in concert with different DOD agencies and to basically vector in and work with our surface assets to do any type of counter-narcotics. What is not on there also is our LMR patrols, our Living Marine Resource patrols. Those are our fishery patrols. Those are making sure that the fishermen are in the right spot at the right place at the right time. So we will, we have those patrols that go daily, and we do a lot of work making sure that the commercial fishing is doing their job correctly. We're very lucky at the air station. Cape Cod, as you might imagine, is a very sought-after place, and that recruits a lot of talent. So thankfully, we are able to get some of the top performers and best pilots at the air station Cape Cod. If you look at the recognition, we've got just a handful of awards just in the last two years, from everything of being our Elmer Stone Award. Elmer Stone is one of our first aviators, that is given in recognition of superior airmanship, all the way down to the Stan Excellence Award. That is basically a, our pilots have proven themselves to be some of the best in the Coast Guard that are stationed here. And of course, we have our Rescue Swimmers Award, the crazy guys that jump out of the back of a perfectly good helicopter, that also we just recognized for their service not too long ago. But pending any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Have your either area of coverage and/or number of assets gone down?
It is not. So we did, years and years ago, I'd have to look back, we did have a fourth H-60, but that has, that was removed from the air station, I would say, you know, way a long time ago, maybe eight, five to eight years ago, but the area of coverage has remained the same. The other part that has shifted also is about 10 years ago, we went from the Falcon aircraft, which is more like the Learjet-looking one. We transferred that aircraft to, we retired that entire fleet, and then we moved over to the 144s.
Have you seen greater boat traffic and higher cost? I guess what I'm trying to get at is, you know, awfully big area to cover-
We did.
-with what seems to me to be a relatively small number of assets to be able to cover that area with a lot of people out on the water, doing stupid things. So-
They do interesting things sometimes.
Right. So are you, are you at, I don't expect you to say no, but I guess what I'm looking for is, you know, do you have the assets that you need to cover things as well as you want to, or have you had to make compromises?
No, we do. We do. So really, if you look at, it's really, if I look at the search and rescue system, it really is that. It's a system. If you look at where all of the small boats are located at, so where everything, you know, we have like the 45 patrol boats, the 87-foot patrol boats, there are those small boat stations that'll launch the, kind of like the smaller, quicker assets, they are all over the coast. So if you were to graph that, there are overlapping sectors where the response ranges will all overlap for numerous sectors and numerous, numerous, numerous small boat stations. So anytime we get launched, it's always in concert with a different type of asset that's going to be responding.
Thank you.
Anyway?
Nothing at this time.
You're good.
Hi, good evening, board. It's my pleasure to provide a brief from Base Cape Cod. My name is Captain Sean Hannigan, and I'm originally from Massachusetts, so thrilled to be here at Base Cape Cod. I've been here for about a year, and I took over for Captain Mike Hudson. Base Cape Cod includes our tenant commands that we help support, its maritime, safety and security team. The Air Station Cape Cod is Rob previously briefed, the Port Security Unit, New England Regional Fisheries Training Center, our Forest Comm Armory Range, and Marine Safety Detachment Cape Cod. Regionally, we support Sector Southeast New England out of Woods Hole, and there are eight stations, four patrol boats, and others. Next slide, please. Base Cape Cod includes several service lines of the Comptroller Base Operations Division. For example, they serve, support over 28,000 meals a year, and our cafeteria galley, facilities engineering, procurement contracting, which has about 2,000 procurement actions annually, our health and safety work life, which includes a clinic, and that has about 800 impaneled members with over 10,000 annual patient visits, encounters, electronic support unit, and our personnel services, which includes our housing, on-base and off, morale, welfare, recreation, the MWR, and that includes support of our Child Development Center, and our servicing personnel office, which supports 4,000 records for our personnel to ensure that their pay and their admin is done correctly. And that's a summary of our mission support of Base Cape Cod.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Colonel Porter, Matthew Porter. I am the Garrison Commander for Camp Edwards. Been here for about four years. I was the deputy for the Camp Edwards before being the commander for the past two years. Camp Edwards is a Level III training site, meaning we essentially train squads on the ranges and company size as far as maneuver or in the contolment area. Not unlike a typical small town, we have logistics, public works. We do have Environmental Readiness Center, which really covers down a lot of our natural resources and habitat restoration, as well as our plans and training, which is more focused on army training as well. We have a number of tenant units that reside on the base. We have 126 Aviation, which fly our Blackhawk helicopters, as well as a C-26 fixed-wing. We've got the EOD, which is our Explosive and Ordnance Team. We've got two engineer companies, one on the base, one just outside the base, and we have 126 Cyber, which is our newest battalion on the base, co-located at the headquarters building. So they are focused mostly on defensive cyber, just like the air wing as well has cyber as well, and they really focus a lot of effort on their training. I know you probably are aware of the Cyber Yankee training that went on this summer and got a lot of attention down here. So really doing a great job down there, and again, that's our newest battalion. We've got a Regional Training Institute, the RTI. That's basically our schoolhouse on the base. And then we also have, you know, the Barnstable Dispatch Center, which is part of our JBC State Fire Station located on the base as well. Next slide, please. This is a little bit redundant, but I'll hit a couple of key points here. Got about 150 soldiers and civilians on the base, and one element I didn't talk about is our groundwater study program, too. Again, really kind of intertwines with that ENRC, slightly, you know, slightly different, but they really focus on the impact area, for us anyways, for the army side, and the cleanup of that area. Next slide, please. This past year, we've had 138,000 man-days. Essentially, just figure, you know, every soldier that trains for a day, that's, you know, that's how I'm counting, so 138,000 man-days of training activity supported. We trained through COVID, one of the few bases that did, so we had very low occurrences of COVID and reacted very quickly to that. But it allowed us to attract a lot of business from, you know, obviously from the state and from the general regional area. Where Training Center, which typically supports us every other year with a aerosol or Pathfinder course, was actually, sent two courses up here to cover down on a real deficit in training and other areas. Pre-mobilization support, we've got, still have a lot of units deploying overseas. Obviously, there's a drawdown from Iraq and Afghanistan, obviously, but we are still deploying all over the world. ROTC Commissioning Support, we actually covered down on support for ROTC in the region. They were unable to go to Fort Knox, although they generally do, so we allowed them to come up to our training area, and they had a great, very successful rotation there. For the first time in a long time, if not ever, but I think it's been a very long time, not that I remember anyways, airborne operations took place on the base. Probably saw some guys jumping out of airplanes, but that actually took place, C-130s and 141s, I believe, were flying, and C-17s, I believe you probably saw those as well. But we were able to certify the drop zone with the help of the Air Force, as well as the Coast Guard, and were able to conduct airborne operations. And then, as always, our habitat restoration remains a priority, and we do, you know, about 10 full-time personnel just in the program, but supported by about another 20 or 30 on the base that take part in whether we're doing prescribed fires, or if we're doing surveys or whatever. So quite a big and healthy program there. Next slide, please. Initiatives, so rain modernization, current projects. We decommissioned two 25-meter ranges. So when we're not using a range, or we don't have a requirement for a range, we decommission it, allow it to go back to habitat. So we had two 25-meter ranges that we no longer use. They were what we call staff ranges. They were essentially a bullet catchment, or catchment system when we were firing lead, but we don't fire lead on those ranges anymore. We fire copper, so no longer require that capture system.
How long ago did you stop doing that?
Firing lead?
Yes.
We haven't been firing lead on those ranges, probably two or three years.
Okay.
And then we restored one 25-meter range, so we had one range co-located adjacent to our pop-up range, so ideally suited. So we restored that range in order to take copper bullets. That used to be a staff system as well. And then multipurpose machine gun range, still pending EMC review. We're still waiting for the last few, I believe, members to be appointed, and then I believe the EMC will then propose a date for the next Community Advisory Council meeting and then the EMC meeting as well. Future projects, the only real other project that we foresee in the, in the, in the range complex would be the restoration of the Infantry Squad Battle Course, which is, currently resides on its own footprint there. It would be a non-automated restoration of that. Slightly different range, that is more heavily treed and, you know, understory, similar to the habitat that's already there, just because that's the type of habitat that our soldiers need with the, you know, cover and concealment as they maneuver. And then Soil Storage and EverSource Substation, as you probably know, EverSource built a new substation up in the northern training area. There actually, it was a good, you know, symbiotic relationship there, where they actually had a piece of land that they were going to develop. Our Natural Resource Department asked if they would not develop, and actually, or I think it was actually Mass Fish and Wildlife or Heritage, because they wanted the continuous habitat that, if it would have, that that land provided. So they actually asked them to move to a different piece of land that did not have great habitat, and they did that, but it required them to excavate 60,000 cubic yards of material. Instead of hauling that off base and dumping it off base somewhere else, we had them screen it and dump it into one of our, once they'd screened it and tested it, dumped it into one of our dig sites, and then it could be used for other projects or for training as we need it. So it saved a lot of wear and tear on bridges and roads, but also a lot of, you know, carbon release as well. Contolment modernization, we have a new armory that is proposed for 2024. That'll be a Milcon project. That'll probably be roughly in the $30 million range, 25 to $30 million range. Physical fitness training field to adapt to our new physical fitness standard test. We got a Phase II of our Utes equipment site. We've got the main building built. That's being finalized, some punchless stuff. Once that's complete, we'll move our unit into there, and then we'll demolish their, the Phase II of the demolition of their current building, and then a cold storage building in that- and then a cold storage building in that location. Qualitative recycling program is off the ground. We have a brass deformer that is actually coming on base in the next week or two, and that will allow us to deform all the brass from the ranges and then recycle it as well. And reclaiming unused roads and parking lots. I know many of you have seen old pictures of Camp Edwards and what it looked like. It was a lot of roads, a lot of buildings. And a lot of them have been, you know, grown back into kind of a grassland area, especially in the contolment area. But there's a lot of asphalt still there, and there's a lot of roads that, you know, we don't use. So we've been in the process, and parking lots as well, of reclaiming a lot of that old asphalt. And that's part of our master plan as well. And habitat restoration, I did talk about, I did actually receive a couple of good facts, as this came up in the Falmouth meeting. But a lady asked if we were aware that, you know, how many listed species we had, and how many moths that we had. And we do, we're well aware of it. We're well aware of it because everybody else is aware of it because we're aware of it. That's what our program does. They go out, they do the surveys, they look for this stuff. So currently on Camp Edwards, we have 176 species of birds, 450 species of moths, 45 species of butterflies, 73 species of dragonflies, and 144 species of bees. And again, we know about it because of the program that are a natural resource and the job they do, and they do a heck of a job. So we're proud of it, and you should be as well. Subject to your questions.
Well, I have one. I'd like to know the status of the explosive cleanup and monitoring and of what happened in 1990s of the cleanup that we've done so far. And what is the cost? What is the cost of the cleanup operation over the time period of 1998 to 2000?
Okay, um, cost, I can give you an estimate, so I'm not, I don't run the cleanup program, but I've heard enough briefings to know the cost of it. We're, I believe, in the 1.2 to 1.4 billion dollar range for a cost of the cleanup. As far as cleanup, I don't know if, is Rose still here? She was here a while ago, but.
Oh, she's here.
Okay. I mean, she could probably, from the Air Force side, she could give you a good idea, and she's probably a little bit more aware of the specific data, but I can give you from the army side roughly. There has, you know, the plumes that we've had in the army side really come out of the northern training area. And it's really over our J ranges, which is essentially the eastern side of the basin. That's the top of the plume, and it all kind of radiates outward, right? Constituents that we're looking for and what has caused contamination in the northern training area are really perchlorate and then RDX, which is the high explosives. Those are the two major pieces that cause contamination. Contrary to popular belief, the small arms ranges that we have, you know, have not been a source of plumes. So I know that a lot of people feel otherwise, but that is not the case. So there's never been, you know, when you look at contamination of lead or copper, it does not exist, you know, radiating off of our small arms ranges. So that's important to note. But as far as the cleanup and the plumes, most of the plumes from the northern training area now reside on base. There's still a couple that radiate outward, but they're all contained, they're all being treated. And I think we're roughly 4 million gallons a day that we're treating. And as far as the, you know, the volume of the contamination, it's shrunk vastly. Now, we also, just for everybody's information, it's important to get out there, too. We are offering Friday tours. So that's every Friday until the 24th of September. It's been in the Enterprise newspaper. This last week was a full house. We had 24 people come on the tour. It's great information. We're talking about our sustainable range program. We're talking about our groundwater cleanup program and our natural resource program. So three of the primary areas that a lot of people want to learn more about.
And what days are those?
It's every Friday.
Every Friday?
Until the 24th of September.
Okay.
We will continue to do it year-round, but I'll probably, once we get off the shoulder season, I'll probably, the frequency will probably be a little bit less just because we probably won't have as many people. But if we do, I'll keep on going.
And who do they check in with to?
So Emily, who is in our ENRC, she is the primary point of contact. And I can send an email or a phone number out to you.
That would be good.
But it's a great tour, and I think it would be very, very good for everybody on this board, as well as anybody who's watching or listening.
I have several questions. And Colonel, I'm not sure whether all these directly fall to you, or whether some Paul, or whether General Fo should be here to answer the questions about the overall operation. But I want to start with your statement about all plumes being under control and on the base.
Contained.
Contained. How does PFAS factor into that?
The plumes from, I'm talking, not all, I'm talking about from the northern 15,000, the ones that are emanating from RDX and perchlorate.
Okay, so who takes ownership of the PFAS contamination?
As an Air Force.
Yeah, and that would be Rose Forbes who can get up. But let's go through your other questions. Rose Forbes can get that one.
I have a lot, and a lot of them are related to the PFAS contamination.
Can we have Rose come up and sit?
Yeah, we'll have Rose.
Are there any more for the Army?
Probably. I mean, it's hard for me to know what's yours and what someone else is here. As far as I'm concerned, they're base questions.
Hi, Rose.
Hi.
Hi, Rose.
Hi. So yeah, you're curious about PFAS. We started investigating PFAS back in 2016. We identified pretty much immediately the fire training area on the base. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I always feel like muffled with the. So the fire training area is a primary source area, and we've, it's a very complicated investigation. We've actually learned a lot. PFAS doesn't behave like a lot of the contaminants that we've addressed before, like chlorinated solvents and fuels. So over the course of the years, we've learned a lot, and we've mapped pretty much a plume coming out of the fire training area. It actually affects both Ashuman and John's Pond. And down gradient kind of goes from Sandwich Road in Falmouth to about the Quashnet River in Mashpee, and then close to Route 28. So if you can imagine, I wish I had a figure to show you, but if you can imagine. And we also are investigating a PFAS plume over in Bourne and Pecasset. It was from two rollovers at the Otis Rotary. One was actually on the base, and one was at the Otis Rotary back in 1997 and 2000. Base Fire Department responded to both of those incidents. There was fuel that was spilled. So to prevent an explosion, they put ATRF aqueous film forming foam on it, and that has PFAS. That created a groundwater plume from the source areas near the Otis Rotary and the entrance to the base on Connery Avenue, Altahen Cove. So through the entire village of Pecasset. And there's, so those are the two plumes that we've mapped so far. We're also working on several, we call them the flight line sites, so several areas on the, near the flight line where PFAS, ATRF may have been spilled, resulting in PFAS contamination. So when I say PFAS, pern polyfluoroalkyl substances, I just want to make sure that everybody's on board with that acronym. So we have sites like a hangar where ATRF was used for fire suppression. There was an incident where a snowplow hit a fuel truck over at the vehicles building on the base that resulted in a spill that the fire department then responded and sprayed ATRF on it. There used to be an area of time and distance training with foam, so that has PFAS contamination. And some fire departments, there's PFAS contamination there as well. So those areas, they're a little bit behind. They're in what's called the expanded site inspection that we're finishing up next. Those sites will then go to their circula, because we follow the circula process or superfund. So then we go to remedial investigation and a feasibility study. So we're very busy with PFAS. We're still in the investigation phase, though. But interestingly enough, some of the infrastructure that we installed early on for treating chlorinated solvents and fuels are actually pulling in and remediating some of the PFAS and have been doing it since 1999. We didn't become aware of it till about 2016, 17. So there was some incidental removal by the existing treatment systems that we installed.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Sort of, at the beginning. And I just want to say, I've always found working with Rose to be a pleasure, and you've always been very responsive. And a lot of the questions I have aren't technical in nature, so even though I'm going to ask them to you, they're not really so directed to you. My concern is that, you know, to the water supply at the trailer park was impacted and had to be replaced at your cost, the military's cost.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, because we did do that at the Lakeside Estates Trailer Park. We removed their well from service, and we connected 93 units in the trailer park to Mashpee Municipal Water Supply.
Right.
We also put wellhead treatment on the Mashpee Village Public Water Supply Well, because that, with two carbon systems, two carbon vessels, activated carbon that removes PFAS. And that was because the concentrations in the well there exceeded the EPA Lifetime Health Advisory, which is, you had PFOS and PFOA together, and you compare it to 0.07 micrograms per liter or 70 nanograms per liter. I'm not sure which number you're used to seeing, so I'm kind of going back and forth with the units there. So we have done that. We've connected 13 private homes to municipal water because they had exceedances of the EPA Lifetime Health Advisory. And we've also provided numerous homes with bottled water, as well as filtration systems.
That's all great. My problem is that the Turner Road wells that the Water District relies on to supply two-thirds of its pumping capacity are offline because of contamination, PFOS contamination, of which you are likely the source.
Yes.
To date, my understanding is that there's been no offer of compensation to the taxpayers of Mashpee for what now looks like an eight and a half million dollar treatment works. What's the difference, and why aren't you paying for it?
Very familiar with that, thank you. So I mentioned that the Mashpee Village Public Water Supply Well had an exceedance of the EPA Lifetime Health Advisory. The Turner Road wells, the concentrations are lower there. They exceed, there's another set of standards that Massachusetts came out with, maximum contaminant level back in October 2020. And they compare six of the PFAS compounds. And just a little backstory, PFAS has thousands of compounds in this group. There's six that Mass DEP has regulated. They're just PFAS six, and that MMCL is 0.02 micrograms per liter. So when you think about that Massachusetts MMCL versus the EPA Lifetime Health Advisory, it's 0.02 micrograms per liter compared to 0.07 micrograms per liter. It's not that much of a difference, but unfortunately, the concentrations are lower than the Lifetime Health Advisory, which Air Force policy right now, we can only address concentrations that exceed the EPA Lifetime Health Advisory. The concentrations in Turner Road wells are 0.03 micrograms per liter and 0.028 micrograms per liter. So just above that Massachusetts maximum contaminant level. That's the reason why we can't address it yet. Now, we can, I'm sorry, I just wanted just a little bit further. We can address it. Once I get to the feasibility study phase, I can then evaluate it as an applicable or relevant and appropriate requirement and error. But that's not going to happen for until mid-2022. So we'll get there, but I realize right now you're struggling because you have two Turner Road wells down.
So is that another, so if you found it in 16, saying you can't, roughly?
Yeah, let me clarify that. We just started investigating in 2016. We didn't know about the Turner Road wells until, what was it, 2019, when they sampled the wells?
Okay, so but at the minimum, it's going to be at least three years before you can even start talking to us about compensating the community. That obviously is a problem for the community. Is it the Air Force's position with that policy that you are not subject to the cleanup levels and mass hazardous waste law?
At this point, yes.
So is that why federal government has failed to respond to the district's notice of intent to litigate within their mandated 45-day limit?
So the Air Force, that, the demand letter that was received from the Mashpee Water District, that has been turned over to the Air Force Litigation Center. Because it's in litigation, I'm not really qualified, I shouldn't be speaking to it.
So is it then, just to be clear about it, then, the position that the state drinking water standards apply to us, but they don't apply to you for your contamination of same source? And if we want to comply, it's on our nickel to do it or shut the source down? Is that basically a fair way to say it?
Yes.
Okay. And this is a general statement or question that doesn't necessarily apply to you, Rose? But I'd like to understand what other state public health and environmental laws and military feels it's exempt from. If our hazardous waste cleanup rules, our drinking water standards don't apply to you, what else does the Commonwealth has passed that's intended to protect? I don't care what the national policy is on whether you think you're responsible. If a state regulatory agency tells us we have a standard we have to comply to, we have to comply to it. What else is discretionary in terms of protecting the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the Upper Cape on whose property you're a visitor?
I hear what you're saying, and we have a precedence where we have addressed the MMCL. So ethylene dibromide, we address Massachusetts MMCL, maximum contaminant level 0.02 micrograms per liter. PFAS is a different animal.
I mean, I'll just, this is not a question, or if it is, it's a rhetorical one. For those of us, and I remember, you've been at this for a while, Rose, on this site. But for those of us who are around, and I don't believe any of the current leadership was, back when you contaminated Briarwood, we had to, and that is why the town of Mashpee has a public water system. And we had to fight tooth and nail to get the military to own up to its responsibility on that site and compensate us for what in retrospect seemed like a reasonable amount of money, but was in retrospect a drop in the bucket. My take then reinforced today is that it's the military, whether it's the Air Force or another agency or service. Your policy as the single largest owner of hazardous waste sites in the country is to not do anything in any jurisdiction that expands your liability that other jurisdictions who face similar and like circumstances could then rely to get you to pay them. So we are getting stonewalled, and we have to pay you, whoever's watching tonight, have to pay the cost of it because the United States military doesn't want to own up to its responsibility. And if you have any question why on matters related to the range or other operational things, there's skepticism, concern, and cynicism about the good neighbor policy. Tours are great. I'd rather have you clean up my water. But if you want to wonder why you feel like the community's against you, look at how you're treating us. I mean, where's the question here? So all the PR aside, you know, let's look at the bottom line. Bottom line is, we got stuck with your contamination back in the 80s, and we had to fight to get compensated for it. We're stuck with your contamination now, and we went to our voters, and the Water District went to its voters and asked for eight and a half million dollars. Maybe we'll see something from you, maybe we won't. We don't have the water supply to take the risk, not treat it, because those, one other source goes down, we don't have firefighting water or pressure in our water system. So what are we supposed to do? And I, you know, not directed at you, Rose.
I definitely hear your frustration.
Somebody at the base needs to own up to what you're doing to us. And think about why what you're doing to us feeds into this fake outrage that, how can you not trust us on the range? How can you not trust us on fill-in-the-blank? I don't trust you because you're sticking it to our community on this, and you're hiding behind these little nuanced aspects of circula versus 21E versus process. I know it all, but it's not, it undercuts everything else you do when you talk about being part of the community. And I don't know who is going to answer that. I don't expect an answer from you, Rose. You've been a great partner, working with us and being honest. Colonel Porter, I don't know whether you're the one to answer. I don't know if Fo is supposed to answer it, or if he's allowed to come talk to us anymore. Somebody needs to talk to us about those, these kind of issues if you want to move forward on any of the other stuff.
Mr. Garliver, this is great questions, but what I would say is, if you group them all into one big group, then we can't address it. You got to separate them out as individual questions, and then we can, hopefully, we can address them.
I have 39 questions. I anticipated you asking me that. You can have them, but I am going to go through them. You know, the problem is, we don't know who to answer. It's not my discipline, it's not my wing, it's not my this, it's not my that. Somebody has to answer for what's going on. I'd like to know, and I don't know who to ask this to, so I'm just going to put it out there. What projects, renovations, new and revived actions or activities related to training are planned within the upper are planned within the Upper Cape Water Supply Reserve beyond what you've told us about tonight?
That's what's planned.
So there's nothing else, nothing else planned?
Like for what? Are you talking about ranges?
I'm talking about any activities within the Upper Cape Water Supply Reserve. Training-related activities, construction-related activities on the reserve.
As far as planning, no. So right now we have an MPMG that we're planning. And we have an infantry squad battle course that we'd like to build in the future, which is on a already infantry squad battle course footprint. We're waiting for the EMC to say that the Tango Range meets their design and approve the final approval. But outside of that, and building a couple of support buildings on those ranges, which are a small building for ammo supply or a covered mess or a bleacher enclosure, those are the types of things, that's it.
Is there any list of those activities that are planned?
I just gave them. But I can give you, I can give you a brief on the very specific if you want that.
I would like, I would find the specificity in these conversations is an essential part of the conversation.
But again, so what it, what it comes down to, so for instance, for, for supply or support buildings for those ranges, I just, so we just did a study and now we're trying to do a design on what exactly those would be. What can we do without, what's the size of those things? So I can basically give you generalities on what it will be based on twenty-five dash eight, which is an Army regulation on what is authorized. But we don't generally need all of those types of support buildings, so we will generally scope it down.
When I asked a similar question at one of your other public hearings, I got a very nuanced answer that you had nothing planned within the next five years other than what you were telling us and that the planning horizon is five years.
No, so that was, no, no. So again, Mr. Gottlieb, you're using generalities and I appreciate it.
I asked a specific question, Colonel.
No, so when you're talking specifics, that was a specific question about MilCon. MilCon planning horizon is five to eight years. That's what we were talking about, not. So if a project is not a MilCon, a MilCon is something that we have to go and bid for, it's something that exceeds a three million dollar threshold. So it's, when it exceeds that, then it's a five to eight year planning horizon. Now, if I have a hundred thousand dollar support building I want to build that's, you know, under five hundred square feet or whatever, then that is much different. That's going to come out of hide, that's one year money.
Okay. Part of the problem in communication, Colonel, is that you may think we all in the civilian world understand the nuances in your different buckets of money and how you think, do think. So when you give me a narrow answer that says, well, that's just MilCon, we're not doing anything else. We have all this other stuff out of here because that travels down different processes. You may be technically correct, but it's not an open answer. So I guess what I'm trying to get at, and I don't want to be criticized for generalities, but I can't ask the question in anything other than a general form because I don't know where you got all the different tracks that you're doing things. Where do we find out, and this gets back to my master plan conversation? Where does the public find out? When is the public engaged on what you plan to do on that base? Which specific activities, which, what things support them and how are they funded?
You know, and if you, if the select board would like us to brief you on the master plan, then invite us to brief you on a master plan. I'll brief you on a master plan for Camp Edwards. You know that the EMC process is the public meeting process that has been.
I'm not talking about the range, I'm not, I'm not talking about the range. I have no intention of talking about the range tonight.
That is the actual process where we have open public meetings that we discuss these projects. And that is the process, but you don't go to those meetings. So that's, that's the problem. You aren't hearing about it.
So it's my fault. What, when you request funding, what is the process for which, through which you request funding through DOD to Congress? How does that all work?
What's the process? How I request it?
How does, somebody at the base decides they want a facility. How then does that request for funding get run up through the chain? What is the chain? How does the public see that?
So it's public on, I believe, FIDEP, but I am not a, that would require a CFMO or, or, facilities engineer for the state essentially to, to talk that piece because he runs all of the facilities through our G nine at the NGB. So I could take a stab at it, but it's not going to be very accurate and I'd be general. So I would, if I were you, I'd request a meeting for us to brief you on the projects and how the funding works.
Let me start writing down how many meetings I need to ask for.
Madam Chair. Can I interrupt just for a minute, Andrew? Andrew, what I'm hearing is, I don't know that the Colonel is here to answer these questions on the floor as you sit here now. But does it make sense for him to take the list that you've presented him with and get a more accurate response to your questions? Give him the time that he needs to formulate and answer and have it come back to you. You can have it at the next meeting if that works, if you would be willing to come back. With that, if that works, I mean, at least give you some time rather than sit there and, you know, in the, in the middle of a room and try to answer these questions. I think it takes a little bit more time with that. It's, it's my only thought. I don't want to see him go around and search, not you, Andrew, you know what I mean? I'd just rather have the, the time that's needed to formulate the, you know, get to come up with the right answers, to talk to his superiors as well. That's, that's just my thought.
I mean, that's fine, fine, I anticipated that, that's why I brought copies. But we get once, we get one request, one opportunity a year to have a conversation.
Well, I'm asking for a continuation of tonight, not, not to.
I'm just saying, I'm providing you with my motivation. We get, we get one chance a year. We've asked, John asked for a meeting on the range in March.
Can I just add something real quick?
Carol asked for it, we didn't get it. So they're here, so I want to ask them questions.
And let me just add, so on August eighteenth, that's the next Military Civilian Community Council meeting, which, you know, you attend and you have invites for that. And that's where we talk all stuff contonment. So and I always send out, hey, if y'all have agenda items, let me know. So this is a perfect opportunity. Send me an email if you want to know something specific, send me that list. And that's the forum to talk about contonment area issues. We have that every quarter, once a quarter. Sometimes they're brief, sometimes they'll go on. So that's the opportunity for contonment issues. So I welcome that input. And we'll stay as long as you want to answer your questions.
That's fine, Paul, but I got to tell you, you know, the piecemealing of this. I'll email it to you, Paul. The piecemealing of this and the assumption that the community knows, well, if I want to talk about these set of issues at the base, because you are the base, it's Joint Base Cape Cod. That's what you are in everybody's minds. So I say, well, if you want to talk about this subset of issues, you got to go to this set of meetings, talk about the contonment area. If you want to talk about this, you're up in the northern portion of the reserve and we'll talk to you about those. PFAS isn't mine, that's an Air Force thing, so you got to go to those. At some point, this is not an effective way to communicate with and engage the public. Colonel, you and I have had before, things got testy between us, you and I had some pretty good conversations early on about the fact that the methods utilized have not been effective in engaging the public. We can debate whether it's our fault because we didn't go as much as you'd like to see us. We can debate whether it's your fault because the meetings are dense and hard to get to and, you know, not intended frankly to engage the public in an effective manner, so people stop going. We can be faulted and I was, you can fault me for believing that the process that had happened for twenty-odd years that had worked well from the beginning of the conference, you know, in the late nineties to the cleanup that has completely broken down in recent years was actually still in effect and that we could trust what was happening and that we would know what was going on. But, you know, it's a lousy process.
Well, let me break it down.
Can I just step in? I understand where you're coming from. We have had some good conversations about, you know, going back to a, a, a process that maybe resembled what it was in the early two thousands. But look at what you have here. We follow a very similar open public meeting law in, in meetings. And the same thing happens here in your public meetings. People don't attend anymore. It's not our problem, it's not your problem, it's our problem together because we all have the same problem. Your town has a problem, we have the problem too. The public just doesn't come to the meeting. So how do we outreach to those, to those, to the public and really get this out? If you have the answer, please tell me and, and we're trying, we're trying to do tours, we're trying to invite, you know, Mr. Weeden, I invited you and the Wampanoans out to the tour. I haven't heard back yet and I know you're busy. But these are the things that we want, we're trying to outreach to the public. I would love to meet the public at where they're at. It's hard. And it's harder when the base is also closed, you know, before, you know, nine eleven, it wasn't closed. I think it was easier to get on the base and that was probably part of it too. But we would like to engage the public a lot more. Believe me, I don't want to have these conversations.
We do have some members of our public here.
I know, but many are not. The majority are not.
But, but I think that it's, Colonel, I think that it's, you know, if you step back and look at, you know, what alienates people from saying it's worth spending my time? The description and the repetition of, well, your laws don't apply, Air Force policy is this. Why should people, you know, I think you should step back and, and maybe you don't make policy and you don't, you're not in the Air Force branch? You didn't make that policy. But at some point, it's the United States government that's sticking it to its citizens on environmental quality on the base. And, you know, at some point, the reaction that you've gotten, which is cynicism, distrust and anger, is predictable and collectively, you're all individually nice people as far as I've been able to tell, it's collectively your own fault. And, you know, there isn't support for your range project because people don't feel like they got informed. I went back through and we've had this conversation. I went back and I kind of pay attention when I'm sitting here. I went back through and looked at the presentations we've had and MPMG was the headline there and it barely got talked about.
But let me add one to that.
And that's not, that's just not something upon which you can rely.
Just let me add one thing. There was an MPMG brief at one of the MCQs back in twenty eighteen and I looked at the attendance and Mashpee wasn't represented. So, and it was a brief by Major McDonough. And there were minutes and I sent out those minutes to everyone. I always send out the minutes for the MCQ and I didn't get any feedback.
But you know what, Paul? When you come here once a year, we assume that you're going to tell us the things of highest priority and most importance.
Let me remind you, the, the MCQs are quarterly, every quarter. That, that's pretty frequent. And so again, if y'all want to talk about something, please send me agenda items.
Science Advisory Council meeting, the Community Advisory Council meetings, EMCs, those are all twice a year. And those, the, the, the range has been briefed in detail because it takes an hour or two to go through that project in detail at all those meetings and have been for a long time. So it's, it's hard. We're, we're trying, we're thinking, we think we're getting it out there, but if people don't attend, it's difficult. So we.
Let me give you, let me give you a corollary, Colonel. We were working for thirty years on a wastewater program in the town of Mashpee. Talked about it at public meetings for thirty years. It wasn't until the year when the project got real and we started to really find different ways to engage with people and bring information to them. We could have sat here and said, I don't know why people aren't supporting this, we've been talking about it, we've been talking about it for thirty years.
That's why we're doing tours and if you're part of the tour, if you come to the tour, great. If I have to go and, and go to Rotary Club meeting, I'll do that too.
Right.
And I will meet people where they're at.
And that, and all that stuff is happening after the fact, after you got blowback and ran it, and ran it to trouble on the range. My point is this, that we as a group figured out a way to change how we talk to our community and didn't tell people, you have to come to us, we're going to find ways to come to you.
I'm not saying they have to come to us.
And so to hear, well, I get to go quarterly to your MCQ meetings either at the end of my workday or during my workday as a member of the general public, that's useless. I'm sorry. That's just, that's, that is, you know, nineteenth century public communication. You guys are freaking intelligent wing. You should figure out how to do communication to the public so that you actually engage people and don't say, as you did in the letter to me from work and my letter that you sent me here, pointing out what my attendance record is and therefore it's my fault, all you members of the public, and you got one and you got one and you got one and you got one, and all of our attendance stunk. And therefore, therefore, you will keep doing that, bring it, the project to fruition and then say, your fault. As opposed to saying, maybe we have a problem because none of the Board of Selectmen came to this meeting. So how do we talk to them differently so they can talk to, they can understand it, they can talk to their community and bring them along? Until that mindset changes, you're not going anywhere.
If, again, if the MCQ does a group, if y'all as a group want to move those to the, during the day, more than happy to, absolutely. But right now, I'm not getting any feedback. I, I want to try and improve it as much as I can, but I need that feedback.
Are the meetings televised?
Uh, no, no, they're not.
Are they offered on a Zoom platform?
No, uh, this one is, yes. So the last one we had was Zoom and then this one's going to be Zoom also.
I think there was, I think it was the last one that the notification kind of went around rather late. It was shortly before the.
I, I usually send it out a month before the meeting, let everyone know, hey, as a reminder, et cetera, et cetera. And then we do advertise it that it'll be Zoom and this next one's going to be Zoom. So, again, I, I hear you, you know, but give me feedback and I'll change it to whatever y'all want, whatever's best for the group.
Well, I think you've heard Andrew's point on this and he's doesn't, he's not satisfied at all. But maybe now is the time to, we, we sit down and we come to a better understanding and a better means of communicating with one another. Let's get, get the answers to those questions that Andrew has just brought forward. Let's see if, can we do that, get, set up another meeting, same, same group, whether it be here or at the base. I don't know that it matters one way or the other unless you want to have it on the, in the same, in the same format as a selectmen's meeting, if that works for you. And let's start, let's move forward. If it works here, maybe it'll work for the other upper town communities as well. And we think we could invite them at the same time. Maybe it could be a joint committee with all of the Upper Cape communities.
Yeah, we did, General Foe did try to establish the MCQ Community Outreach Subcommittee. He was looking for a chair and other members. And there, the intent was for them to come together and figure out, how do we crack this nut on trying to make sure we're getting the message out and we're getting feedback, you know? And we, we did get a volunteer for the chair, but we haven't heard of any of the members wanting to participate on that. And I know it takes time, you know, we're all busy.
Well, I, you know, I decline the, the offer to chair that committee because it was made clear to me that it would be a discussion about how to change processes after the range was approved.
It was more, yeah, it was, it was about communication going forward.
Yeah, and so forget this, you've lost, move on, we'll talk about other stuff, of which apparently there's nothing planned.
Actually, I was hoping you would be on the committee, so.
Anyway, I would like, and I, you know, I frankly didn't expect anyone, I had thirty-nine questions on this thing. I didn't expect anybody to be able to answer them directly, but I would appreciate answers because I don't know who to ask.
We haven't heard all the questions.
And I would say to our fairness, not on the spot, because some of these do take a little bit of research.
So when can we get an answer?
We, we do have to talk to our financial folks, we do have to talk to our facility engineers. It's, you know, sometimes some of this information does take, our questions take time to research and get you a good answer. So.
Can you at least come back with a timeframe on when we could expect a reasonable answer?
I'm going to put this on the MCQ agenda.
Okay.
You know, this is perfect, this is, if it's contonment related, okay, so two areas. Northern training area is Army, contonment area is MCQed. And so I'll go through these, anything contonment related, and I have the commanders here and we'll research those questions and get you some answers.
Well, if need be, then I would, I guess what I would ask is that the, each, each service look at these set of questions and answer, answer the portions of them that are relevant to them.
Absolutely.
At some point, somebody runs the operation over there, I don't know if it's Keith or whether it's Foe, but somebody's got to be able to say, this is how it works for the overall operation of the facility.
And that's the difference, you know, we're not a typical DOD installation where there's one commander that oversees everyone. A typical joint base, one commander, he gets all the funding for everything. We're not that, we're four separate agencies on there and it's run by partnership and cooperation. So Coast Guard's process is different than Army's process, is different from Space Force's process. So that's why it gets complicated, that's probably why.
Paul, it's the military, somebody's in, somebody's in charge.
No, no, absolutely no.
No.
No, I don't, the base, the base is different. So yes, there is someone overall in charge of each service, correct. But for instance, even, so if I go, General Foe is not my boss. I am my boss on, on the base. From there, I go up to state headquarters. From state headquarters goes to NGB, from NGB it goes to the Army, you know, so it's, it's, each one is separate and distinct. They aren't combined under one.
But Foe's the executive director of the base, right?
Or Homeland Security, that's where.
But he, he does not control the Coast Guard, he does not control the Space Force Station.
So what does he do?
So the governor, the governor proclaimed Joint Base Cape Cod by name only. You know, it used to be the mass military reservation for many years and so. And that's why it's sometimes complex. And what I tell a lot of people is like, if you ever have a question, come to me and I'll find the answer or I'll find someone who can get you that answer.
Okay.
And a lot of people do use me as that resource though.
So if you all cooperate, if you all cooperate on your joint missions, there's got to be some cooperation around. got to be some cooperation around community engagement and cleanup. So, who's, who's running that show?
Well, the cleanup is Rose Forbes and...
Except Sean Cody. The cleanup that's under your command.
The cleanup is not under my command. It's actually technically under National Guard Bureau. But Sean Cody is also our Chief of Staff, and he runs the cleanup program on the base. So, he is part of the National Guard as well, so it's very intertwined.
Rodney, you have a question?
Just like Rose works for AFCA, I believe, correct? So, she is not technically under, under the wing either. Is that correct?
Mr. Collins?
I'm not going to talk about policy, but Colonel, I appreciate the dialogue that you and I have had. I appreciate your professionalism. I appreciate your service, and I think there's one thing hopefully everybody in this room can agree with. I am so proud of the fact that the people that spoke at that mic protect and serve this country and make us all safer. When I'm out on the Tuckett Sound, it's nice to know that the Coast Guard is nearby, and I trust all of you to keep this country safe, and I really appreciate the support that you provided down in Washington. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And I know...
And I'd just like to say, I too appreciate what you guys do, but I'm also sick and tired of being made to be defensive about my patriotism if I ask questions of the people who sworn to protect us. That, there is no, there is nothing unpatriotic at all about asking questions about what's happening, how you're operating, and what you're doing. And, you know, it's a, you know, you get painted with this broad brush that you're somehow anti-military, anti-American, or anti-whatever because you have the audacity to look out for the people who live in the community that you're elected to support when things have gone wrong. Spend 100, $1.2 billion of the United States taxpayers' money cleaning up your mistakes. Why shouldn't we fight to make sure you don't make any more? And, you know, so, I just think...
Sir, so let me just say in closing again, don't blindside us with 39 questions. Send it to us beforehand so we can come prepared to answer these questions specifically. That would be very helpful for this conversation.
Okay, that's, that's fine, Paul, but I got to tell you, I filed a public records request to get the public comments on the, on the, on the machine gun range, public comments from the public, non-classified. And I got run around, and I got denied and sent to another agency.
Mr. Gallo, I could explain that. I would like to explain that because I, again, that's a misrepresentation, and because you weren't, you can't see behind the scenes, but I can tell you exactly what happened. You filed it through the wrong state, but we knew about it, and then we gave it to you regardless. We still had to send, as part of the FOIA process, a declination or declining of the request because, and how to go about doing it correctly.
You gave it to me after I filed an appeal at the Secretary of State's office. You could have declined it and said, you know what, Dodo? You asked through the wrong statutory...
Two different agencies.
You asked, but we'll give it to you anyway. Next time, do it this way.
That's not what happened.
You denied me, and then I got it afterwards.
That didn't come from me. That comes from state headquarters.
I didn't say it came from you.
I know, but you have to...
I didn't say it came from you, but Paul, when you say, just send me the stuff and we'll answer it, I asked for public copies of public comments, and I get jerked around on process. Why should I?
Mr. Gallo, when I was told that you were looking for that information, we immediately gave it to you, knowing that you'd just received a letter saying that you filed it incorrectly because it behooves us to be transparent with that information. We already knew, you know, it's public record anyways. It was going to be public record once it got, once the actual responses were approved and gone through by NGB, it was going to be all public record, so it doesn't matter to us. It's not classified. That's why we wanted to get it to you as quick as possible.
Anyway, respond to Paul's point. I'm done. I don't want to drag everybody through the rest of this.
I'm going to leave here feeling like I'm hiding something, and I'm not distrustful, and I don't want to feel, I don't want to leave feeling like that. I take my job very seriously. So, all I ask is for you to, you know, reach out to us.
And we will.
Okay.
We will.
All right.
So, is that, so we're going to move forward?
They're going to come back in, Tom.
They're going to come back in with some of the answers on those questions.
Well, these I'm putting on the MCQ agenda, which is on August 18th.
Let's regroup and come back and work together as a team, protect the residents of the upper Cape and from any of these potential dangers that lurk in the waters and underground.
Absolutely. If you require, if you would like a master plan brief, by all means, request it, and we'll, we will present a master plan. Now, it depends on what service you want, you know? I'm speaking for the Army, so...
That's good. Thank you.
You can do. That's great. Appreciate it very much.
So, Friday tour, so it was advertised in the Enterprise. It's still being advertised in the Enterprise. Right now, I know we were, we're probably pretty much full for this Friday, but I think the following Friday is probably good to go. We were full house last Friday.
Great. Well, thank you for coming in. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you, everybody.
Discussion and action on draft, I'm sorry, communications and correspondence.
Mary. Mary. Mary, if you want to take it, take it outside. Not a planning board meeting.
Commute, outside, please. Communications and correspondence. Old business? New business? Discussion and action on draft one of the October 18, 2021 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Okay. There are 16 articles submitted by various departments and boards. There's 10 articles submitted by petition. One is road-taking, two-step road-taking articles, and one proposed single-use plastic water ban, and six zoning articles with regard to solar energy. The articles are not numbered, but the pages are. Discussion following the articles for town meeting. Somebody want to start?
I actually just, on the first article regarding 108 Commercial Street, I know that you're talking about, you know, transferring the land over to Affordable Housing, from my understanding?
No, to Affordable Housing Trust.
A housing trust.
Which is us.
Correct. But my question is, that's just the land, is that as far as what they're proposing there, when it regards to with the topic of water and septic, is that going to? I just think anything that's proposed for future development, I think we should consider if it, if it's adding a new septic, a new treatment, if it's going to be connected to a treatment center, that, I think that should be considered and now discussion going forward from here on.
Okay.
Just my opinion.
All right. Yes, that will have to have a treatment plant, John? Any development there would have to have their own treatment plant, right, Wayne?
Well, or tied into one that's already functioned.
So, do we want to go through these?
You want to try and get things put on tonight?
Yep.
If we can, yes.
If we can. So, do Article One, we'll give it a number.
Call that one.
Madam Chair, do you want to go to the two departments that we have here?
Yes, that would be good. We can go to...
I can go to bed.
We have Ashley and Evan here.
They were here for specific items?
Yes.
Plan review, adoption, sewer treatment discussion.
Okay. So, Ashley? Hi, Ashley.
That makes sense.
I just have to find the article.
Good evening.
How are you?
Well, how are you?
Which article is it?
You have, you have a memo that was sent by them that describes each article.
I'm sorry, it's right here.
Okay, it's a separate...
I've got it. To see if the town will vote and appropriate, transfer the sum of $50,000 for revenue available for appropriation to the National Resource Waterways Expense Account. This will provide funds for consulting services to request funding through the Seaport Economic Council by way of coastal zone management and the University of Massachusetts of Boston. Urban Harbors Institute for Mashpee Municipal Harbor Management Program. All funds will be used to implement a state-approved harbor management plan.
So, you just want me to explain what we're doing? Okay, so, what I'm doing is I'm putting together a grant through the Seaport Economic Council, and the $50,000 would most likely give us the 25% match, which would be more of an opportunity to receive the grant funding, knowing that the funds have been allotted for the 25% match prior to submission.
So, this is an article that we're adding tonight? No, it's already...
It's already on.
Oh, it's already...
It's already on. It's just you folks that asked for explanations on it.
Anybody have questions?
No. So, if you don't get the grant, this money goes back into the till.
Into the...
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion, we include DNR Article One and support it in the warrant.
Oh, yes.
I can second that motion.
Roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. That's good, then. Now, next is discussion on the last plan review meeting. I've attached a zoning article.
Oh, there's, she's got a whole bunch.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry. I have five.
You have five, okay. To see if the town will vote and prohibit overnight occupancy on the town-issued moorings within Mashpee Esq. System, provisions to Mashpee Bylaw, Chapter 170-90A. Go ahead, Ashley. Explain.
So, this article is necessary to substant, to substantially, I'm sorry. This article is necessary to ensure that our shellfish habitat remains protected against spillage and marine sanitation devices spillage or overflows. And this would also help to ensure that our shellfish areas remain open all year, in the areas where we are approved.
Do I have a motion to support?
Just a quick question. So, it's to prohibit overnight occupancy?
Yes.
Staying on the boat.
Just stay in the boat.
On a mooring.
On moorings.
Just on the moorings, okay.
And this would just be in the saltwater areas?
And it's during the months of May, June, July, August, and September?
Yes, that's correct.
Do I have a motion to support?
Make a motion, include it and support it.
And support it.
Second.
Roll call? Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
And just so you know, Madam Chair, the, this started on page five of your town documents, if you wanted to refer to that.
Okay.
So, we're going to page six on the third explanation.
Paul, thank you for that.
Okay. Article three, to see if the town will vote and amend the town bylaw under the waterways' use of Chapter 170-4. Speeds to read, maximum speed for watercraft is slow, no wake, headweight speed. Four, on the following bodies of tidal water, Great River, oh, this is good. Great River, Little River, Santuot River, Mashpee River, Aquay Bay, Shoestring Bay, and Simon's Narrows. Very much needed.
So, you don't have the ability to enforce now because the bylaw is not very good?
No, the bylaws state that they are able to go up to planning speed in the planning channels. The planning channels are nonexistent in those areas, and we haven't been able to identify a channel within those areas.
But you have no means to enforce now because...
If you want enforcement, we need this.
Yes, absolutely.
I make a motion, we include and support.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call? Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. And four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of estimated $350,000 awaiting bids from revenue available for appropriation to the National Resource Waterways Expense Account. Four?
So, this article is necessary to fund a diagnostic study of the Mashpee Wakeby Pond. Mashpee Wakeby Pond is one of the only waterways in town other than, only other freshwater body in town that hasn't had a diagnostic study done to it. And with the increase in cyanobacteria blooms in the Wakeby side and the influence on sewage and septic wastewater, it just needs to be done so we can fully understand that waterway.
Agreed. Thank you. I need a motion to support.
I make a motion to include and support pending the filling of the bid number.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call? John?
Yes.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom? Yes.
I did, I did wonder if, do you feel that that's sufficient to ask?
I do. I did ask a number of different agencies, and the estimate was around $300,000, but they said it would be safe to go $350,000. That way, you would have enough, and if anything isn't used, you would obviously go back into the general fund.
But we're going to slide in based on your bid, right?
Yes.
Prior to town meeting.
Yes.
So, we'll have an actual price.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Good. Okay, DNR five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $19,050 from revenue available for appropriation to the National Resource Waterways Expense Account. Account unknown.
Okay, so the $19,050 would cover the 25% match needed to fulfill the grant that was received through the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program to study Santuot Pond and its effects on climate change. We're also going to be doing educational outreach through that grant and implement a runoff point source on a private area in Bryant's Neck.
You're going to do one store water installation?
One store water improvement, and it's mostly educational outreach that's involved in that grant program. We'll also be exploring different algae side treatments through that grant.
I make a motion, we include and support.
Second.
Roll call? Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
One question was the ACOM report. Wasn't that the report that was done on the back end of the drought?
Yes, so that's what part of the grant is going to do, is to reassess the ACOM report and to look and see if that, those estimates are still true to this day. And then we'll look at different treatments and avenues that the town could go down in the future, and this will be done with consultants from Fasen O'Neill. They're going to be looking at these point sources and cranberry bog restoration possibility, dredging we have going underway with the dredging feasibility study that's due to be complete in December. We'll also be exploring the different avenues that ACOM did recommend back in the 2010 study.
So are they going to look specifically at the question of just phosphorus transport, distance in groundwater?
Yes.
With a critical eye towards that 300-foot buffer?
Yes, and then we're going to look at bylaw review. That is part of this grant. And the ACOM did suggest what Andy's talking about is the 300-foot buffer within that area. So we could enact bylaws through this, this grant program. A large part of this grant, too, is a tribal liaison, and we're going to be putting together a story map at Santuot Pond Preserve. And we're hoping to have a lot of the tribal support doing that.
I guess just to be clear, Ashley, what I'm looking, asking about whether they're going to critically assess whether that 300-foot travel boundary was sufficient. Not what you would do within that 300 feet, but if you're regulating phosphorus, is 300 enough given transport, or do you need to go further?
Yeah, we're going to look into that during this, this.
Because I don't believe the 300-foot number. It comes from somewhere.
Well, that, that's a big part of, they're going to reassess the ACOM report to see if that is sufficient.
Okay.
And if you have any suggestions when I come to the board for that, we will be looking for a tribal liaison to work with and, and open up a working group for this grant project. So I would like to have a recommendation from the board, maybe of somebody who is interested.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ashley?
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amending zoning bylaw 174-48.1 subsection B, Plan and Review Committee. This Evans?
Overlay district.
Overlay district.
This stuff.
Oh, okay.
Good evening.
How are you?
Well, how's everybody?
Good. Okay, Evan. We had some questions. I know Andrew did, too. Attached are written summaries of submitted petition articles relative to the creation of a solar energy system overlay district, as well as a petition article that would amend the land space requirements. Table of zoning bylaws to allow more than 20% of the lot coverage for roof-mounted solar panels on carport structures, improved parking areas, lots and areas. Okay.
So can I try and give you an English language understanding of what I think you said in your memo? Tell me if I'm right.
Yes.
Somebody wants to do a carport, it doesn't count against them in terms of coverage.
Accurate.
If they got parking lot, they got parking lot, they can put a solar canopy over it, and it doesn't matter.
Yeah, any commercial industrial project that has an approved parking lot, um, the, any structure that would support a roof-mounted panel in that parking lot would be exempt from the maximum lot coverage.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else?
No, I don't know whether, as a matter of process, I mean, these are on the warrant because they're petition.
They're petition articles.
Do we want to wait till the planning board has a hearing to take a position?
I would suggest that, yes.
Okay. Just a matter of process, want to be clear where we're going. So what's the next, the next one? So the other, the next one is just to add the definitions section, what was included in the prior one?
Yeah, that's identical to what the planning board re- previously submitted. The definitions are exactly consistent with what the Commonwealth recommends for solar bylaws, similar to what the petitioner has submitted to the board selectman.
Okay. And the next one would allow ground-mounted solar in medium and large areas, which is exactly what we declined to put on the warrant last time? Same thing?
With the exception that, as proposed the last time from the planning board, it had no restrictions with regard to where they could be located in any zoning district. It was pretty much allowed by special permit in that previous submission in the R3, R5, I1, C3, C2, C1 districts. Whereas the submitted petition article isolates essentially a subset of parcels to make that language apply only to those parcels.
Okay, which leads to my next question. So the next one effectively cover one lot or multiple lots, contiguous lots?
Correct.
So it's basically spot zoning?
Well, there's no legal definition in the statutes for spot zoning, but we can.
It benefits one landowner, one, one cluster of parcels, and doesn't have broader applicability to the rest of the town. Is that a fair way to put it?
We can assess the facts, right? So it would be to the benefit of a single landowner in a zoning district where the use is not permitted otherwise. So it would benefit that sole landowner. I think there are other things to consider, though. And, you know, the, the legal definition of spot zoning is generally worked out by way of litigation. But to your primary premise, yes, this would benefit one sole landowner.
The petitioner.
The.
The petitioner, right?
The petitioner, yes.
Okay.
You know, the district as proposed or the overlay as proposed is similar in acreage to our other zoning districts. You know, for example, the Mashpee Center Overlay District is around 36 acres. It proposes 40 acres, so we have to consider the size of the district itself. Whether the, the, the change in use, if you will, or the special permission to do a certain use in the district is, is modest or a complete, complete, incomplete disregard of the, of the planning of the neighborhood itself. So I, I'm not in a position to say, yes, this is spot zoning or no, but there are, uh, there are facts relative to the submitted petition articles that would make one question whether or not this is a spot zoning situation. I think cases could be made on both sides.
Evan, just a quick question. So this zone, is there any other zones that could be affected by this change?
The only.
Any other parcels, if you will?
Yeah, so one of the other articles that the petitioner has provided establishes essentially the boundaries of the overlay district itself. So the special provision article, I think it's 174-48.1, as proposed, would, would impact only those parcels provided in the article that defines the boundaries of the zoning district itself. That could be increased over time, it could be added to, it could be reduced over time. But for the purposes of analyzing the petition articles as presented, it would impact only those parcels. The only other medium and large-scale solar overlay or solar energy systems that are permissible are permissible today, and they're permissible in the industrial districts only.
So we're going to change the potential zoning to benefit the petitioner and petitioner only?
Say it again, John, I'm sorry?
So the, the petitioner would be the benefi- beneficiary of the change of zoning alone, correct?
He would bene- he, the petitioner would benefit from the, from the ability to develop a medium and large-scale solar energy system in the, in the C2 and partially R5 zoning district, whereas other property owners in those districts would not. Also keep in mind that a medium and large-scale solar energy system is quite large and requires a pretty significant amount of land area, of which not all parcels in the zoning district benefit from also. Just a piece to consider.
So it's a, it's a unique parcel that would fit the requirements to provide this.
The point I'm trying to make is certainly the individual property owner who has submitted these petitioners would be solely, would solely benefit from the added use. But I'm not in a position to say whether or not this is a spot zoning situation or not.
No, it's good. I get it.
Evan, I'm having a hard time hearing you anywhere with the mic. I don't know whether it's the mask or whatever.
Maybe that's a little better? Sorry, Tom.
So, but, um, so it, without, without any change of the use or allowing this property to use, there's not much use of this property overall, I believe, because there's, it's a, is it a wetland, the majority of it, or?
There is a portion of the property that runs along the Charles River, which would, would sit within a wetlands buffer. There's also a vernal, vernal pool on the site. But a significant portion of the site has also been, I believe, sand mined or gravel mined. It's used as gravel pit. So it's been significantly disturbed in some way, shape, or form. The development potential, in consideration of the wetlands buffers, in consideration of the vernal pool, and then the disturbance on the site makes development of the site within the current zoning regulations more challenging.
Mean less profitable?
I'm not in a position to say whether or not it's profitable, selectman.
Challenging in what way, though?
Uh, it just adds unique, uh, there are unique characteristics to the site by way of past uses that have made it uniquely restrictive. That would require, I think, investment to study and understand feasibility of future uses moving forward. I'm not saying that something is not profitable or not possible.
But, but the town would benefit if it were, it's, it's a tough property to develop, it sounds to me. I can't even call it the whole property exactly.
How many acres are we talking?
But are there, are there tax revenues that'll be derived from the use of this property?
Are there tax revenues?
If it's developed in this manner, if it's approved and developed, we would benefit the taxes from taxes.
There are development rights granted to the property today under the current C2 zoning, as well as the, there are a collection of single-family, uh, conventional subdivision parcels that could be built out of single-family homes. There is tax revenue potential by way of what is currently there and what could, you know, if a rezoning were to occur, whatever that potential would be also. But, um, this arti- the petition articles, it doesn't impact the, the underlying base zoning either. All of that development potential and revenue potential would remain on either scenario.
Any other questions?
Has the landowner or his developer made any formal offer to the community on what would come from solar development at this site?
Beyond the correspondence I've received from the petitioner's attorney relative to these articles, no. So I've only been notified that these articles are going to be resubmitted.
So there is no standing offer? So anything about revenue other than value-based application of the property tax is speculation?
Yes.
Thank you. And nothing in these articles compels them to do anything on that regard to the town?
No.
Okay. Anyway, these are petitions, so we can't do anything with them until planning season.
Exactly.
Yeah, so just the planning board's intention is to set the public hearing date at their next meeting. You'll receive that agenda as you normally should, and I would imagine that public hearing would open in, in mid-September, at our second meeting in September.
Thanks, Evan.
Thank you.
Thank you. You need us to act on the, um, adding the zoning article that would add the town engineer to the Plan and Review Committee? You need a formal?
I'll just pick a point you have.
Okay.
Can you chop, no, we can go back to this?
As discussed in the last plan review, I've attached a zoning article that would add the town engineer to the Plan and Review Committee in a formal capacity without the necessity for you to name him as a designated.
Just to change because our structure's changed.
Okay.
I make a motion we include that article and support it.
And support it.
Second. Absolutely.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 And adoption of administrative code relative to the creation of a sewer department? I'm sorry. Adoption of an administrative code relative to the creation of the sewer department?
Yes. As selectman Garland has alluded to in the past, the town engineer position was established a long time ago. But we obviously have not had a sewer department, so therefore, um, the engineer would essentially be the department head of the sewer department. And it doesn't change the sewer commissioners or anything of that nature. It just simply puts the town engineer into the table of organization, which he, he or she has not been for however many years the position was established. The position previously was just kind of, pardon the pun, floating out there.
Exactly.
I'd like to make a suggestion, rather than have it the sewer department, I'd like to suggest we call it the wastewater management department.
As long as it's a department?
You don't care. But just, it's broader than just sewers.
No, I think that's good. Wastewater.
So I'd make a motion we include.
We just need a department.
We include an article and support an article to be drafted by town school, town council to add to the administrative code, a wastewater management department.
I'll second that motion.
And to clarify for anybody in sewer land, that, again, this can't be emphasized enough because I heard a lot of concern about it. This doesn't affect the legal status, operation of the sewer commission in any way, shape, or form. It's an administrative code change.
Okay, I have.
As far as the budget, budget approval process?
They go through.
Goes through.
So it would be two separate, one for the department and one for the commission?
Well, essentially, I would assume that they're both going to be in the same account. They may be different line items, but it would be submitted under, um, just like the police gets wages and dispatch wages and expenses. It would be something similar to that.
Right.
Support and to add, I have a first and a second, a motion and a second. Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Very good.
My commission's budgets all one hundred bucks.
Okay, so let's start, let's dabble.
Yep.
Okay. Article one, to see if the town general bylaw, well, we just discussed that one with the transfer of the.
Bottom of page one, yeah.
Bottom of page one.
See if the town.
See if the town Mashpee bylaw follows to amend by submitting the term select board for the Board of Selectmen and adding the following. For purposes of these bylaws, the select board shall assume and retain the status formerly designated Board of Selectmen, which shall assume all powers and duties vested in the board. So it's just a change of name.
I make a motion we include and support.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Article three, to see if the town will vote to rescind the authority to issue the following.
Excuse me, Ms. Chair. On article, the first article, did you guys support that or not?
Yeah, we did.
Uh, we did.
We did.
Okay, I didn't hear the vote. I just wanted to be sure.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Article three, to see if the town will rescind the authority to issue the following unissued balances of authorized bonds or notes pursuant to the votes adopted under the following articles to extend not previously exercised or take any of the other action related thereto.
I make a motion we include this and support this article.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Article four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer $50,000 from principal temporary borrowing outside two and a half account to principal temporary borrowing inside two and a half. And vote to transfer $2,720 from interest temp borrow inside two and a half to the interest temp borrow outside two and a half or take any other action related thereto.
Motion to add and support.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Article five, to see if the town will vote and appropriate and transfer the sum of $2,256.25 from revenue available for appropriation to pay for the previous fiscal year's unpaid bills as follows.
Motion to add and support.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Article six, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of, from revenue available for sewer, sewer salaries account.
Motion to add and support.
I'm sure we'll have a figure.
Whenever the figures come in.
Is that be, is that wording right now?
Wastewater?
Or would it be wastewater?
It would be wastewater management account.
It would be that.
Okay, so just amend it. John, you'll take that?
With that change.
Okay.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Article seven, to see if the town will vote and appropriate and transfer the sum of, from revenue available appropriation to the CARES Act or take any of the action related thereto. This is for COVID funds?
Yeah, I mean, we need to do this. I make a motion we include this? This, this?
Yeah.
We don't have a number yet, right?
No.
Okay.
All right, let's include it and support it, but bring it back with a number and we can sanction it.
So we're leaving it open or we're going to put a budget in?
We'll get a figure.
But you're saying add and support for now?
Support, I mean, it's a space holder so we can move money into accounts. So we got to get a number eventually. I like the signal that we want to include.
Will we approve the number?
I don't know the number.
When we get it.
When we get it.
Yeah, we'll have to prove it when we get it.
All right, I'll prove the motion.
Yeah.
Yes.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 So as an ancillary thing, we brought up the question of where does the ARPA money go, which I understand now is separate from this CARES money?
Right.
But when are we going to, are we going to get a recommendation or discussion of that at some point soon?
Yes.
Okay.
And like I said, um, it's just over $700,000 that we've received with an anticipation of another $700 and something thousand next year.
Okay.
Article eight.
This next article, is this, it says sewer expenses? Is that, is that considered, is that part of the wastewater?
It would now be wastewater.
Wastewater, so.
Management.
Management.
Wastewater man, yeah.
To see if the town will vote to appropriate or transfer the sum of $9,625 from revenue available for appropriation to the sewer management account.
Wastewater management.
Wastewater management account for aerial photography of the entire town or take any other action related thereto.
I make a motion we support, include and support, just for the board's information, what this would allow the town engineer to do is keep you getting detailed topographic maps and allow them to design and look at what flows uphill, what goes downhill.
It was downhill, right.
Uh, without having to go out and do field surveys.
That's good.
Long-term, it's going to be a cost saver.
It's a big cost saver, long-term.
So it's incorporating light on?
Yeah.
Long-term.
Have multiple, multiple uses for a variety of programs.
So I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Second, yes.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Article nine.
Top of page four.
Yeah. Article nine, to see if the town will vote and appropriate, transfer present to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, subsection six, to reserve from the FY 2022 estimated community preservation revenues.
This is our annual 10% required for each of the three categories in the balance going to a preserve account. I make a motion we include it and support it.
Second.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes. Article 10, to see if the town will vote and appropriate and transfer from community preservation budget for appropriation reserve in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, subsection five, the sum of $425,000 for the purpose of funding the Aquay, Aquay Bay Boat Ramp Improvement Project, Phase Three, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto.
So this came from community preservation unanimously? It was, it, basically, we've done the parking lot and expanded the parking. This is actually fixing the launch ramp itself and accounting for the fact that, because people are power load, they've completely undermined the pad and extending it out so it'll last longer.
Okay, so I need a motion to support and.
Motion to include and support.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Article 11, uh, see if the town appropriate the sum of $50,000 from revenue for appropriation for natural resources.
These you've already done.
We just did those, okay. Twelve.
So you did, uh.
We're done with page five, we're done with page six.
Fourteen.
Top of page seven, I believe.
Top of page seven.
Right. Okay. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $9,000 from revenue available for appropriation to the town clerk's election registration expense account to purchase six election poll pads and six election poll printers or take any other reaction, reaction, action related thereto.
I would make a motion we include and support.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Article 17, to see if the town will vote to authorize and empower the Board of Selectmen to prepare a plan laying out and defining Kitchit Avenue and to accomplish the said purpose and for expenses related thereto to the town to vote appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation $5,000 to the Kitchit Avenue Roadways account or take any other action related thereto.
I make a motion we support it. I'd make a motion, we support it.
This is submitted by a petition?
It's on.
Okay. And support? It's on. We just need support.
Just support it.
Okay. Roll call?
Yes.
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 I would say the same with the next set of streets is off.
It's eighteen, yeah. Support?
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Okay, yes.
I'll make the same motion for the old damn circle one.
Okay. Roll call for nineteen? I need a second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Twenty, yes.
Just for everyone to the same page, yes. That was nineteen and that was in the bottom of page eight.
Yeah, and now we'll go into article twenty, to see if the town will vote to adopt the following as a general bylaw to, and to insert it into the code of the Town of Mashpee, Mass. Section one, single-use plastic water bottles. It's a petition article, so do we want to support?
I do not.
Okay.
I think under, I know we had the situation last year, but not to scream COVID, but under the circumstances, I just think the timing might be a little bit off. It's just, I think the plastic bottles are, I'd like to keep them for safety reasons at this point, but that's just my opinion.
Okay. Andrew?
I would support it.
Okay. David?
I'd support it as well.
Okay. Tom?
Need to think about this one.
I support.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say no.
Okay, it's three to two.
To do a form, that was just a poll. I'll make a formal motion that we support it.
Okay.
I mean, if you're going to, we're going to put a recommendation on, we need to do it.
Okay. Article twenty-one?
So that was a three to two support, correct? Three to two support.
It was unofficial.
Well, why don't we just, just to be safe, can I just make a formal motion that we support it?
Support it.
And then get a second and vote it.
Do I need a second?
I'll second.
David seconded. Roll call?
Tom?
So we're still on twenty?
Yeah.
Correct.
Because it's three to two, we're just going to make a formal?
Earlier, we just talked our opinion. Now it's an official.
Now it's official support because it's three to two.
I'll start off. No. Sorry.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say no.
Yes.
Yes.
I said yes, I'm sorry.
John?
I'm going to.
Okay.
I think that's all of them, isn't it?
Yes, the rest of you, I believe, are waiting for the planning board.
The solar.
Good.
Okay, we did pretty good.
We did well.
Okay. Discussion and approval of our town manager's twenty-one, twenty-two goals.
I like the broadness of this and thought the priorities were right.
I do, too. I think you did a good job listing.
You've got a lot of work to do.
You're going to be very busy.
Always does.
Yep.
I'd make a motion, we approve the town manager's goals for twenty twenty-one and twenty-two.
Second.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, very good. Okay, discussion with the town manager and approval of COVID-nineteen requirements and protocols.
Yes, Madam Chair. Today and over the weekend, there were five new positive COVID-nineteen cases.
How many?
Five. No deaths. There are currently twenty-one cases in Mashpee. No cases have moved out of isolation. The total positive case count stands at nine twenty-two as of this afternoon. Obviously, there is a mask requirement at Town Hall, and that has not been specifically extended to any committees or commissions, whether it be a regulatory board or whether it be advisory. I felt to defer to the Board of Selectmen in that regard, but in terms of the decision that was made for the effective date of Friday, I spoke with department heads Wednesday, as well as in concert with the Health Agent, and felt that it was the appropriate action to take. So I don't know if there's any other direction the board wants to give me. I just want to remind you that we've got town meeting coming up in October. So I just need a little direction from the board in terms of what you're thinking or what you want me to pursue.
So for the, on my call.
Yeah.
So, you know, the Water Waste Commission holds a meeting in this building. Do they have to have masks on, under your order now?
No, this was directed to staff and to people coming in for services. We weren't going to get into an argument with people if they're not going to put a mask on. We're just not going to provide them with a service. In other words, they're going to have to go online or they're going to have to call us.
To my mind, it makes no sense. Somebody can't come in and do a transaction in five minutes without a mask, but somebody can come in to the Board of Appeals meeting for three hours and be in the room without a mask. That doesn't make any sense.
I'm not.
I'm just saying, if you're looking for us to do that, I would be willing to do that because the inconsistency is actually mad.
Well, that's what I'm looking for.
I agree with you. I just wanted to be, I didn't understand the fine line between staff and non-staff and customers.
I feel like I can tell staff what to do, but I don't feel like I can tell boards and committees what to do.
Not all of them agree, but go ahead.
I don't think you're overstepping your bounds, but I mean, I thought, I assumed if we're inside this town hall, you made the rule in the town hall is inside your house and.
Our house.
Mask is required.
Yep.
End of story. So.
End of story.
If a committee meets in this.
You need a vote?
House?
I would just like a consensus that you support the action.
I would support you in issuing that either.
I would support you, too.
I understood it to be that way anyways.
Yes, all-town buildings.
All-town buildings.
Yeah.
Now, I don't think, like, for example, necessarily the transfer station where people are outside. I mean, are we talking about?
I'm only referring to.
Closed buildings, closed spaces.
I'm only referring to inside a facility.
Closed spaces and buildings, not all.
I'm not talking about anything outside.
I think that's rational.
I think that's right.
I'd be good with that.
Yeah, I'm fine.
You want to vote? No? Don't need it?
Why don't we give them a vote, just so?
Okay, roll call?
I'd make a motion that we support town manager and the issuance of a mask mandate for indoor all-town facilities.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. And town meeting?
Town meeting, I think we should, like we did in June.
I agree.
I, with the numbers going up in all the different towns here on the Cape, I think we need to think about.
I kind of enjoyed the tent, it was cool.
I kind of did, too. It was good.
Get some heaters on, will you?
Do I have to?
I know you like a cold, but not everybody is a polar bear.
But I think we need to look at.
I think everybody will wear a jacket this time.
Yeah, and I don't think we're going to be having five hundred seats this time, but you never know.
I think it would be good if you had an early conversation with the moderator.
Yes.
But that indicates.
At least start the ball rolling.
I know Wayne enjoyed the logistics around this enormously.
Yes, I look forward to it.
Yeah.
So that's all I really have on COVID. So we're going to be, obviously, pursuing the tent.
Yes. Everybody feel comfortable with that?
In the tent, it would mask. Never comfortable in the mask.
Unless you encounter some issue. Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have on COVID.
Okay, laser on reports? Anybody?
I, we've just been very busy with sewer design, treatment plant design, with sewer commission and the town engineer, a lot of good work going on, so.
Okay, now, town manager's updates.
The only thing I have here is the Saint Louis Pond and Butter survey. I did receive some data from the Health Agent. I'm not going to get into the whole thing, but there are a total of one hundred ninety-three parcels within three hundred feet of Saint Louis Pond. And there are a total of one hundred and eighteen parcels within one hundred feet of Saint Louis Pond.
I'm sorry, what was that, second one, one eighteen?
There's a total of one hundred and eighteen parcels within one hundred feet of Saint Louis Pond. And I think to make it crystal clear, particularly since this is such an important issue, I'd like to have the Health Agent and possibly his assistant come in to provide a briefing, and I'd like to schedule that for August twenty-third.
Is that our next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Oh, great.
Yep.
So that takes care of that update. The only other thing that I just wanted to bring to the board's attention is on September eleventh, there's going to be the Seaside Le Mans at the Commons, and that is at noon. And the Fire Department is advising us that what generally occurs at the fire station is going to be in joint session over at this Seaside Le Mans. And if any select person would like to speak, then you are invited. And I'd just like to know who that would be, so I can just get that name to them. And that is all I have, unless I'm forgetting something.